All right, all right. Um, Madam Manager, let me know when we are live.
Mr. Quintana, are we ready? Yes, sir.
We're live?
We are.
Okay. It is now 7:36 PM, Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. This is a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami and preliminary budget submittal for 2022-2023 fiscal year. This meeting is now called to order. Can I first start with the invocation, Madam Manager?
Yes, um, may I call upon Major Delgado tonight for the invocation?
After the last one, it's going to be a hard act to follow, but we'll try our best. Please bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings which you bestow upon us. We ask that you give clarity and guidance to our city leaders and elected officials so that they continue to make the right decisions when it comes to the wellness of the city and its residents. Please protect our military service men and women as well as our law enforcement officers and firefighters so that they may return home safely after their tour of duty. We ask this in your holy name.
Amen. Thank you. If everyone can stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can see. Madam Clerk, can I get a rule call?
Yes, identity rule call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Here.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Um, can I get a, well, who wants to the presentation in a minute? Can I get a motion to approve all from June 8th, June 8th Special Commission and June 15th?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, every, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item?
Item five, public comments.
Anyone here for pu- uh, public comments? Seeing none, next item?
Item six, report of the city manager. No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Beautiful. Next item?
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Even more beautiful. Next item?
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
And you ruined it.
No report. No report, three for three.
Oh, you're beautiful. All right, um, next item, please.
Item nine, committee reports. Uh, in their committee reports, we have appointment of member to the Planning and Zoning Board by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
So I, I discussed with the manager, the vacancy that arose now in the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, is mine to appoint, uh, in the rotation, and I will be appointing Gustavo Ceballos, who I'm sure you all know, he's, uh, not only a resident here for a while, but also a government land use attorney, uh, currently with the city of Coral Gables. Um, so I think he will make an excellent member to the board, and, uh, I'll be providing his personal details for you to contact him at a later time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Next item?
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome. Item 11, under new business agenda item, would you like me to proceed with the regular order, Mr. Mayor?
Well, if, if, uh, Mr. Ceballos, did you want to say anything? Please come up.
Not necessary, but I want to thank the mayor and the commission for their vote of confidence. I'll make sure that I can bring the best to the city's, uh, Planning and Zoning Board, um, given my experience as a land use and zoning attorney and being board certified in city, county, local government for a few years now, I think I'll be a, an asset to the team.
No, you will definitely be an asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving.
My pleasure.
Mayor.
Welcome.
Please go ahead.
I'm pretty sure Ceballos is going to be an asset for the city. Great thing. Thank you. And, uh, welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item, and I'm running through this because I know our agenda is long today, uh, with budget also. So, next item?
Yes, 11A, this is a presentation by Y-Green in reference to PACE program in the city of West Miami. This item is sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
The Y-Green team?
Yes, um, represented by Alex Alamo, uh, Y-Green, uh, we also have present Jose Fuentes and Max Losner, all for the same program.
I'm very excited you guys are here. I know we are, I know you'll probably say it, but, uh, I think we're the only city left on the Y-Green map that's, uh, that's not colored in, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, uh, for having me here tonight. Uh, my name is Alex Alamo, Director of Government Affairs for Y-Green Energy Fund, and I'm grateful for your consideration, uh, as well as the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Uh, property assessed clean energy, commonly referred to as PACE, enables property owners to finance storm hardening, energy efficiency, and renewable energy upgrades on their properties. These properties, uh, sorry, these projects are repaid by the property owner through a self-assessed, non-advalorem assessment, which goes on their annual tax, uh, property tax. Y-Green Energy Fund is the leading PACE provider in Florida, serving both residential and commercial property owners. We are currently active in 176 local governments in Florida. To date, we have invested approximately $1.6 billion in over 74,000 disaster resilience, renewable energy, and energy efficiency property improvement projects across Florida. These investments have translated to over 42,000 new jobs created, over $2.3 billion in lifetime insurance premium savings, over $2.5 billion in hazard, hazard loss savings, over 1.9 billion kilowatt hours saved, over 27 megawatts of solar installed, and over 976,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions reduced. Y-Green is committed to providing transparency to property owners. We provide disclosures to property owners and walk them through key program features, including but not limited, limited to, uh, the financing terms, repayment process, and risk associated with PACE. We also require the property owners acknowledgement of terms and conditions for PACE financing. Y-Green discloses all costs and insurance, ensures that there are no hidden fees. Additionally, we perform outbound recorded calls to all property owners to confirm the terms of their financing. Uh, Y-Green provides contractors, contractor screening and training, as well as fair pricing controls on property improvements. We review the contractor status with the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation and verify licensure, general liability, and workers' compensation insurance coverage, as well as any record of consumer complaints. Y-Green regularly conducts reviews of its approved contractors in order to maintain the strongest possible network of PACE contractors in your community. By approving today's resolution, Y-Green can be a tool for the city of West Miami that can help the city achieve benefits such as economic development, job creation, and environmental sustainability goals. Approving today's resolution will allow property owners in West Miami to have greater choice in energy efficiency and hurricane protection financing options. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate your consideration.
Sure. At, uh, let me first say, I'm, uh, I've been an advocate for Y-Green coming into the city for, since as long as I've been on the commission, and, uh, I'm glad you guys are here in front of us now, finally. So, with that, uh, does anybody have any questions from the table? Well, actually, let, let me, let, why don't we do this? Um, should, should we read the resolution first and then proceed to questions, or how do you want to do this?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would read the resolution into the record, and then if anybody has any questions, then we can take those up at that.
All right, let's do that.
Okay. Uh, item 11B, resolution of Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into a ne, into an executing agreement creating a property assessed clean energy coastal corridor PACE district in accordance with Section 16308 Florida statutes, establishing that the city will not have fina, financial involvement in the program, adopting an interlocal agreement pursuant to Section 16301 Florida statutes relating to the corridor as better described in Exhibit A, providing that Y-Green as the program administrator for the green corridor will execute interlocal agreement with the city of West Miami, providing for authorization and providing for effective date.
I make a motion?
Second.
Uh, I thought we had.
Hold on, do, do, yeah, let's, let's just, uh, uh, would you draw it for, for a moment, just to, go ahead.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Are there any, um, issues, implications, uh, for the city adopting this resolution?
No, sir.
When you say no, sir, you've looked into it and are thoroughly assured of that?
There's, there's really no, uh, conflict with, uh, the intent of the resolution and the intent of, uh, what to be done. What is your specific question?
Issues and implication, legal implications for the city. Will the city be?
There's no implication for the city at all. The city, the city is not responsible. As a matter of fact, the contract, uh, bears the fact that, uh, there's no responsibility. Uh, Section 9, responsibility of Y-Green or indemnification, so the city is also indemnified by any action of any, uh, of Y-Green or any contractor or contract or supplier, uh, that render services within the city of West Miami.
Okay, good, you're on the ball. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
If I may add something to that, if it makes you feel, uh, better.
Please.
Obviously, this came to us a while back ago.
Before, yes.
And, uh, the, the people who represented the company, Y-Green, did not want to build or were not in a position to build an indemnification clause in there, and that's what was concerning. Um, I remember at the time, Vice Mayor, you were one.
I vaguely remember, but that's why I asked the question.
I remember, yes, I remember very well that you all, uh, were concerned that there was no protection, um, no indemnification clauses. So the company has come back, I think that they have a better product, uh, in terms of an agreement now. They, this is not an exclusive agreement, we have another vendor that has already gone through the process, and, um, Y-Green is obviously another option that the residents will have. But there's an indemnification, we had several meetings where the city attorney participated, he's reviewed the, the agreement, as well as the membership agreement, um, which is attached, uh, to your packet, uh, the amended and restated interlocal agreement, and there may be an opportunity for the city to have a representative at the table as well. Am I correct? Jose?
That is correct. First of all, just Jose Fuentes with Becker Polikoff, uh, Coral Gables. Um, the manager is correct, we've worked very closely with the city attorney and, uh, highlighted obviously the indemnification clause that's currently in the agreement, um, to the point that the manager brings up, this program has, you know, gone through a revision, that we started somewhere in 2007 in the city of Miami, it was like our first test for municipality, it grew for official-only program, and rapidly has covered every city, and I think the mayor pointed out very well, I think the only city remaining is the city of West Miami as far as the Y-Green map. Y-Green is the largest PACE provider in the state of Florida, uh, and, uh, you know, we'd love to continue to work with you all, um, and join the corridor.
All right, it's, uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that information.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Attorney, thank you, Madam Manager, thank you for sharing.
As a matter of fact, we did have, we did have quite a number of, uh, meetings and, uh, ratification of the, uh, non, uh, responsibility agreement that we negotiated with Y-Green.
Um, Mr. Fuentes, how, how soon after this agreement is executed, should it pass, um, will residents be able to start using the financing and services?
I think it's once your clerk, uh, officially seals, um, the document, I think we're just a few days from there, and then, uh, Y-Green will come and visit with the manager and start to kind of lay out what, what the parameters are, and, and then it becomes up to the city, and most of the cities that Y-Green represents, uh, in Dade County, which are most of the cities, um, the cities put it in their newsletters, for example, or they put it on their community channels, and again, you're not responsible for the, the vendor who is installing the improvement, whether it's vendor or not. Now, we do suggest that if there is a recommendation, and there's a business in the local municipality, that that vendor, if they're not certified or part of the program, they become part of the program, because it's to the benefit of the local government.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions?
No.
It was a motion and a second?
Second, yes.
A motion by?
I was reading about the, the program, and I was reading about everything, and I agree with that.
You have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, second by Commissioner Suarez, and call the rule.
Okay, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and, uh, city manager.
We'll talk soon.
And city attorney, just in case.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty, we're rolling, so next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 11C, report by Converge, the city's legislative consultants, and we have Jonathan Kielman from Converge.
And we also have, uh, Will McCree here from Sun City Strategies.
Good evening, uh, it is a pleasure to be with you, uh, again, and, uh, as I've said many times, you know, uh, I've had the opportunity to represent, uh, City of West Miami along with Sun City now for, for a number of years, and, uh, one of the, the pleasures we get to have is coming here and delivering good news. Uh, and so before, uh, we get to any other business, uh, it's, it's a great thing for me to be here with Will today to inform you that, uh, there was $2 million included in the state budget that survived what was a fairly, uh, for some in Miami-Dade County brutal veto process, uh, this year, and that will allow the city to really, uh, I think, move substantially toward the completion of its underground water utility, uh, improvements, and I know that's been a priority for the city for quite some time. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we assisted in the filing of a, uh, the local grant, uh, program to fund the second floor expansion of the, uh, police station. So, uh, you know, I, when you're on a roll, uh, hopefully the, the, the good things continue, obviously we'll do everything that we can, continue to work with Yolanda and, uh, you know, work very closely with, with our team and along with Sun City Strategies. Uh, I don't know if Will wants to say anything?
Um, well, I just want to say something on behalf of Eddie, I know we always work hard, especially for day days up in Tallahassee, when you guys want to go up there and show and advocate on behalf of the city. Uh, we love representing the city of West Miami, you guys are a small city, we're Hialeah kids, but we advocate, we have the same passion for government and for.
Well, the Hialeah, congratulations on your contract yesterday, uh, in the county.
Thank you.
The, um, uh, coming, Jonathan, uh, the, uh, these, the second story expansion in the police department, that's 700, $750,000, uh, that goes through the House?
Correct, goes through the House.
So that's, that's, that was sponsored by our representative, uh, Busta Cabrera?
Busta Cabrera, correct.
Okay. And that's, and that's exclusively through the House?
Correct, and I met with her yesterday, we're going to stay on top of it throughout the process. We've asked what are the parameters that define the process, the timing, the decision-making, and what we're advised is, none of that's been determined yet, uh, and it's a bit of unusual circumstance, so it's not surprising, uh, but we'll stay on top of it throughout the entire, the entire process. I wanted to follow up just for a moment, if I might, on something that Will said.
Yes.
Uh, the presence that you all have, year after year, in Tallahassee is meaningful, and I know that COVID made that a little bit difficult, and I know that not everybody can make it up, I mean, you know, people have day jobs, it's not something that's easy, you know, easy to do, but, uh, but for the size of your city, the presence you've made felt there, uh, I think the ROI, uh, the kind of proof is in the pudding. So I want to thank you for the collaborative approach, uh, that we have, both when we're here in Miami, as well as when we're in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for, for either Will or Jonathan?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
When is session, uh, starting?
It is going to be in January this year, yeah, January, February, because it's an off-election year. So, will be past election, so January, February, which means the committee weeks will start earlier this year. Uh, I need to check, September, do they have them scheduled yet?
They're not. They're not. An organizational session.
Organizational session, yeah, so organizational probably September, and then it'll get rolling pretty quickly in October.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, I know there's a, there is item D and E, um, now, I want to clarify something on item D and E before we get right into the record, um, I, I think maybe there was a scrivenor's error or something, the, the recommendation to extend the contract between Converge and the city of West Miami for two years with an option to renew for another three, right? So can we, can we make that correction on the, on the recommendation, the resolution?
Duly noted, sir.
Thank you, and, uh, can you read both of them into the record, and then we'll take them together, including your recommendation?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, item 11D?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would also like to point out that, uh, even though the session commences either January or February, the committee meeting starts way before, so, uh, the lobbyist, uh, works, uh, that's really not start in January, but, uh, it's starting just about a month from now.
Well, it's already started, because we have an appropriation sitting there right now.
Right. But in terms of the upcoming session, that, that's right, I mean, we need to begin to develop priorities for the upcoming year, uh, over the next, you know, probably 60 days, uh, to give ourselves a bit of a head start.
Well, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so the organizational session kicks in after the new House and the half of the new Senate kicks in, so it'll be after November.
After November, that's right, yeah.
So then, soon as that happens, that's when session gets set up, well, you know, former Senator, uh, the committee weeks get assigned, and the official start of session is declared as well, so it'll be right after.
That's a good correction, sorry, yeah, it'll be after the elections when we get the organizational session, but I can tell you, people are beginning to have conversations with prospective sponsors on policy issues, et cetera. Obviously, for our purposes, appropriations will continue to be important, you know, we will continue to work with you to give some guidance as we hear about what are the things that are being favored for appropriations, et cetera, and any feedback we get about the outlook, uh, but, as always, you know, I, I think the key is to, you know, the more of a head start you have, the better chance, chance you have to kind of get your issue going.
Yeah, and on that, on that point, uh, I'm, I'm glad that we have Will and Eddie and, and your team, uh, together, um, because I, I do want to have a discussion, uh, when, when the session starts forming, or when the committee streak starts, committee weeks start forming, uh, to see what is favorable, um, and what committees especially, uh, to see if, we, maybe we go after some, I know we've, we've been shooting on this one appropriation every year, and it's been a big ask, but, um, it might be time to kind of open the array a little bit of what we ask for, uh, to kind of put more balls in the air and, and make sure that we get something that sticks, so, uh, we'll be having discussions as it, as it gets closer, Bud, go ahead.
I have a question, let me clarify this. Um, your suggestion is, and I think it's very perfect, uh, the extension for two years?
For two years.
And the three years?
Uh, option.
Will be, according with the performance of the first two years.
Correct, correct.
In the two years, they have to show that they are big and tall, and help the city, and then we, we recognize that.
It's fine, because Eddie's big and Jonathan's tall.
So now you have 24 months to change the city.
As long as you don't judge me on my hair.
I think it's a good idea that way, two and three, you know, so we see your performance.
Let's, uh, read the two items together, so we can talk about it.
Yes, item 11D, recommendation to extend the contract between Converge and the city of West Miami for two years with an option to renew for another three years for a total of five years, commencing October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2027, by city manager. Thank you, and that, that is my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and read, read the resolution?
Yes, uh, okay, correct me if I'm wrong in, on the amendments we've done, uh, item E, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to extend the contract for services with Converge, the city's legislative consultants, uh, extending a contract for a period, period of two years, commencing October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2024, providing for no increases during fiscal year 2022, 2023, providing for CPIs in years, uh, two and three, providing for an option to renew for another three years based on the contract performance, for a total of five years, providing for legislative representation in Tallahassee, Florida, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
All righty.
Okay, I make a motion, two years and three years?
Two and three, yes.
You have a motion and a second, before I ask, before we move forward, did anyone have concerns before? No, okay, you have a motion and a second, uh, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, and thank you both.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I look forward to working with you both, and I'm sure the commission does as well.
We appreciate it, see you up there soon.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Break a leg.
I will try.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also report that we were selected to represent Miami-Dade County in Tallahassee.
Oh, really? Oh, fantastic, fantastic, congratulations. So we got, we got everyone, we have Miami-Dade's lobbying team and legal team and, and, uh, great.
You know, I don't think he got that, I said break a leg, meaning to do well, I thought he meant go up there and break legs.
Either way, right?
That's an expression you say to people, break a leg, which means you're going to go out there and you're going to do great.
Just trip up the stage.
Next, the, next item, uh?
For the audience, that's what I meant. I didn't mean him to go over there and break some legs.
Item 11F.
We're making good time, so.
Yes, report and recommendation by the chief of police in reference to purchase of equipment for the West Miami Police Department to be funded by equitable sharing at no cost to the taxpayer by Chief Abila.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, this is some equipment that we are, uh, looking to purchase, uh, tactical and training equipment, uh, security for the officers, equipment, and, uh, some training. This will all be coming from equitable sharing funds confiscated throughout, uh, investigations with the federal government for drug enforcement and money laundering cases. The, the first thing on the list that we're asking for is a, the, um, the mobile speed trailer, which is probably the most important one that I'm looking at here at this point. The one that we have is over 17 years old, it's, it's not working, it's not replaceable, we can't get parts, and it's, uh, really in bad shape, so we'd, we'd like to get a new speed trailer that also issues messages, uh, I'm sure that in your package you guys saw the, uh, the, the report on the system, it's, it's really good, and it was the cheapest one of the three quotes that we could find. Uh, we're also want to get your approval to change over, uh, to the new tasers, uh, we're the only agency using the old taser system, they're over nine years old, uh, we're having problems getting them repaired, and replacements are, are becoming a few and far between, and that'll be a contract for the total amount that's written there for five years. In other words, that's the amount that it would cost for five years, it's like we're leasing them from, from Taser, but they take care of all the repairs and, uh, give us everything for those five years. Um, the next one is, we need helmets, uh, Kevlar helmets for the officers. Lord, help us if we have a situation, these guys are going in without nothing covering their head, uh, so we need 22 helmets. Um, the next is the, it's a shoot don't shoot machine, uh, basically, it allows our guys to get trained for situations of active shooters, school shootings, things of that nature, it keeps them trained. Uh, we don't have a lot of time to be able to do monthly training, some, like some other departments do, or biannually, biannual training, but with this equipment, we could set it up in any office or anything, and we can put the guys through different scenarios involving shoot don't shoot, active shooter, school shootings, things of that nature, and I look forward to seeing all of you there, to go through the course, so, I mean, if we do end up purchasing this, this is good, this is a good thing, the guys would, will, will keep up, uh, in their training. And then the last thing is, we want to send Major Delgado to, uh, basically the equivalent to the FBI National Academy, which is SPI, uh, which is out of the University of Louisville, Kentucky, it's a very prestigious school, it's, like I said, it's equivalent to the FBI Academy, except it'll be done here locally in Doral, and that way we can keep the major close by in case we need him for any reason, and, um, basically that's, that's all we're, uh, we're asking for.
And you're proposing to use equitable sharing?
Equitable sharing funds, uh, as you know, that are, won't cost a taxpayer a penny.
Does anybody have any questions from the table?
I don't have questions, I have a comment. Thank you very much for found this, uh, source of, uh, to pay for this equipment.
Of funding, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's all very neat, I know we, we discussed it for a while. And it's all very neat. I know we discussed it for a while.
Once this gets voted on, how soon can we participate in that training?
I'll be walking over to her office with POs tomorrow morning.
Oh, Lord.
Does it have a dirty hairy setting?
It's pretty neat. It's pretty neat. It'll wake you up to the realities of what these guys go through, what we go through.
The firefighters gotta stay in their lane.
Does it have a setting of a guy with a broken leg?
It could.
If there's no other questions or concerns, does anybody have a motion to approve?
We need to read the resolution.
And that happens once a meeting. That was the one time. Go ahead, read it.
Item 11G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to execute the purchase of traffic and tactical and training equipment as well as a Southern Police Institute Command Career Course as discussed during the police budget meeting with the City Manager on May 25th, 2022 for the purchase of the equipment for a total cost of $54,033.93, set funds to be paid from equitable sharing account providing for effective date.
Motion?
Second.
You have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, second by Commissioner Suarez. Call the roll.
Commissioner Chavez, I do vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want one.
All right, next item. The next three items are all, Commissioner Chavez, so we will, we're towards you. Go ahead, next item.
Yes, item 11H, discussion and possible implementation of the Free Little Library program at city parks by Commissioner Chavez.
So this is just basically to get the conversation going. We're gonna discuss it more when we establish or continue the Rec Advisory Board. But I wanted to bring to the table the idea of the Free Little Library. If you go to basically any city around us, you'll see they're, they look like little houses on a stand. There's books that people donate. I've actually been looking into trying to see if we can get donations from different libraries. So still working on that. I think that that'd be great. A lot of the residents have stated that things that they want brought to the neighborhood, one of these would be, our Free Little Library is one of those items. So as far as maintenance is concerned, there's different materials that you can look into to purchase. And for the most part, on the site that I've seen, they're about $400 to $500. So they're not extremely expensive, and they do last a long time. The ones in the gables, some of them have been there for about four or five years, and they look the same as when they were installed. So it's something great that I would like to see in each of our parks. Specifically, I would say Cooper Park, maybe not the rec center, just because there's a lot of kids there, and they have their own books and things of that nature. But putting them at Cooper Park and our two other parks.
Garden Club and Laring.
And those would be nice areas, because the parents, when they go to watch their kids play, they can read a book, they can put another book for someone else to read. So that's one idea. Do I continue to the next?
No, let's briefly talk about that. The Free Little Library is a great organization. I've thought about bringing it to the city in the past. I'm glad that Commissioner Chavez is doing it. You know, one recommendation that I would have is, I know there's different ways you can get it. You can get it fully built, you can get it painted, would be to engage the community as much as possible in doing it, because it is at its core a community engagement tool. Because the whole point is that books, the community's supposed to put books in and take books, and it's really just about the community. So as much community engagement as we can get from it, I think would be favorable.
Yeah, and with that being said as well, there's a steward that a lot of times somebody can be assigned as a steward to each of these, and they will be the people that would oversee it. If there are members of the community that would like to be involved in that respect, they can come forward as well. And maybe we'd see those individuals when we're building it together with them. But there's a community of over 100,000 of these throughout the nation, and there's an app for it as well. So anywhere that you travel, you can actually look it up and try to find a book to read. So, you know, this I think would be a plus, and it's also gonna bring, I guess, a form of artwork to our city that we're lacking as well. Any other comment with that?
No, I think, did you want to, how do you want to go about this? Do you want to wait until the Recreation Board is going, or do you want to take this separately? What do you all think? Do you just want to start moving forward outside of the Recreation Advisory Board?
I think this specific item, we can do that.
Whatever. How do you think is more practical?
This specific item, I would like to get moving already. It's not too expensive. It's something that we can.
So can we get a blessing for Commissioner Chavez to start working on this?
Yes.
Yes, very. Thank you, guys.
Madam, Clerk, next item.
Item 11I, discussion in reference to racquetball court at the Recreation Center, the replacement of the batting cage, and a new concept for our parks and recreation to include splash pads for the children. Commissioner Chavez.
So the first thing I want to mention is the splash pad. Those that aren't familiar with what those are, there are pictures in the back of your packet. This is one of them. So basically, water gets shot out from under the ground in different tubes. And again, something that can bring, you know, a sense of artwork to our community. It's also something that the children really enjoy. So we have people in our community that go to Pinecrest Gardens, go to Metro Zoo, and they really enjoy this. They spend the day there with their children, think that this is something that would get a lot of attention from our residents, and they would really benefit from it. The issue with this, or not necessarily an issue, it's where exactly can this go? So I was thinking, if we put it inside the rec center, it's, there's a gate, you know, it's enclosed for safety purposes, and then we have our rec center, you know, the summer camp, children, the children that go after school, they can enjoy this. And the issue, however, is that there's not really a location in the rec center to place this. So we have discussed before with the racquetball court that's there. I'm 34, and since I started going to the rec center when I was five, six years old, that racquetball center has been there and has been untouched. So I'm kind of curious to open a discussion of any ideas to bring that back to life. And if there aren't any ideas, this might seem a little off the wall, but I'm thinking that this would actually be perfectly placed in that location.
So if I may, remind me, Madam Manager, in the, when we were trying to do the gym, when we were doing the gym, there was talks about renovating the racquetball court.
Yes.
That were very expensive.
Yes.
Right, they were about, if I correct me wrong, they were about, there was over a billion. There was like $800,000, something like that, to enclose it?
To enclose the racquetball? No.
Was it something like that?
$800,000 was the match that we had.
How much was it to ballpark on the closure?
About.
How much?
185.
185. Okay, so it was expensive, but not, 800, right?
Right.
The splash pad is something that other residents have mentioned to me. I didn't know what they were. I had to look it up. I had no idea what they were. But then now, since I looked it up, it's all now my Facebook all the time, because that's how the ads work, right? So now I see it all the time. I will say just personally that I think that there is a better use for the racquetball court space. I just, I'm just not sure if this is or something else is, right? And that's what I would really like for the Recreation Advisory Board that you're chair of, to really come together on and have an organic, you know, decision on priorities and what should go there, what should go in the rec center in general. Because we are limited in space, as you mentioned, and we really don't have the luxury of other communities to get it wrong on what we do in our spaces, because we just don't have that much of it. So I think it's a good idea. I just really wanted to run through the process of, you know, of the community, of people who use the rec center, and you're chairing that process, so that we make sure that we get everything right. And I like to do that frankly across the board as we move on to other things and planning and zoning as well, run more things to the planning and zoning board. And you really use our residents as a filter for ideas. So I think it's a good idea. I just would really urge to, even before exploring it really deeply, to make sure that we engage the residents on that. I think the first step of that, we've already discussed publicly, is that activating that board, which we already have a good membership on. We just need to activate them in that purpose.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more with that one. Can I add?
Go for it.
You know, Commissioner Chavez is absolutely right. That space is literally unused most of the time. It's been dead space.
Yep.
As far as, I don't know, the last 20, 25 years that I know. So I think, I think it's a great idea. I think that that space would be better used if we do a, what do you call it?
Splash pad.
Splash pad. I think the kids, you know, like the mayor said, we have limited space. And I really, really think that the kids are really gonna enjoy that. I think that we need to consider tearing down those four walls. I don't know how much that would cost, but opening up the space and doing just that. I don't think that we can have the splash pad within those four walls.
No, 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 definitely not. I think whatever we do there that's not racquetball, should we leave the racquetball route, which I would imagine would probably be a good idea. Or maybe, wrong, maybe the rec center says, we've been dying for racquetball. I don't, I doubt it, very much doubt it, but I'll leave my mind open. I think any of that would include tearing down those walls. I just don't know, and that's up for the administration to think about at a later time, if it's smarter to do it beforehand or as part of a project because of the financing, any financing that's involved, or anything else to make the project more affordable. So it's probably easier to just do it as part of a project.
We have our engineer here.
Yeah, am I correct on that? Please, someone, both of you.
You know, we could buy a bunch of sledgehammers.
Or, yeah, we can.
Just give the kids each a sledgehammer and turn down the wall.
The decision is up to you. We could really add it to the contract that we have existing. We have a demolition provision there for the existing building where the bathrooms are. So it's just adding it on to implode it and remove it.
Is there, we have everyone here tonight, I think, piece of budgets, that's good. Is there a, is there any benefit if, that were torn down and just made green space for now, for the kids? Is there any benefit to that?
John Michael? Yeah, we need to hear from John Michael.
Yeah, I was looking at him.
What do you think about this? Tell us, give us your take.
It is, it is a, good evening, everybody. It is a very awkward space. I can't speak for the other parks, because I don't run the other parks. I personally would think it's a better idea, the other parks, because of the dynamic that we have. There's not a lot of, the kids would have to bring extra clothes, the kids would have to change. In the summer, yes, it would be a better idea, but then how much are we really using?
Right, so just in terms of the racquetball court now, right, if it was torn down and just made green space right now, right, is that, was there any, I mean, is there any benefit to the kids now? Have more space there, do anything?
No.
Does it make a difference? Because what we're trying to figure out is whether it makes sense if we're in agreement that the racquetball is gonna go anyways, whether it makes sense to tear it down or as part of the contract we have now, or as part of a future contract to construct something there.
I personally think the racquetball room, it doesn't get a ton of use. Again, people are limited with the time that they can go in. They can only go in from 6:00 to 9:00. And the racquetball room is in poor shape. It's been in poor shape for years. It's only one court, so when people are not gonna wait there, there's no time. You know, we'd have to, if it were fixed up, we'd have to put some sort of time limit to make it more accessible to more people. But usually, if somebody goes and they see they have to wait, they just leave. The tennis academy uses the outdoor court, where the pavement is, as practice while they wait for tennis. Or people, when the courts are too full, they use that. You could say they use that more than the actual racquetball.
Right.
But they're there longer. The time that the tennis academy is there is a much longer period.
Yeah, so I would say this is, I mean, it's not an urgent matter, the four walls. I will say the more urgent matter is getting that board running, so that we can start progressing for whatever it is we're gonna be doing. So, thank you. I mean, unless you have any questions. I would, my opinion would be that we get that board running at its peak as fast as possible, so that we can really start to move on things that are important to the Recreation Center and programming and otherwise.
What would be the next commission meeting?
August 17th.
Okay. What I was, what I'm thinking is, well, we already have the board, right? We already have the board. So we would just be amending it, give it more, give it more, I like to make it an ordinance, actually make it a permanent structure, as a resolution. I would say that this is pretty vague, so you can use the board right now as a, you know, for that purpose. I would just like to, you know, make it, codify it for that purpose. But I would say that the way the resolution, the board is written right now, you can bounce ideas off people, you can start getting them organized. So next meeting, let's try to get a first, especially if you have time, let's try to get a first reading on a codification of the board as an ordinance, and then hopefully a second reading the following meeting. But I would say you can already start organizing based off of this resolution, and we'll talk to the attorney after the meeting. You can talk to him. But I think that's, this is written pretty vaguely to allow you to do that. So I think you should be able to start right away.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, of course.
Thank you. Because it is budget time, and we're submitting a preliminary budget, I think it's a perfect opportunity to talk about setting aside a little bit of money because you have demolition expenses. If that is the way that the committee and the commission decides they want to go with this, and we have to set aside some design money, and we have to set aside some construction money. So I think, I think we need to be careful enough or prudent enough to go ahead and include something in the budget. So that's already a change that I see occurring even before the presentation.
Right, so that'll all be discussed after this meeting, I'm sure, with Commissioner Chavez and the rest of the commission.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions, or do you have any closing remarks on I?
No, I mean, I'm glad John Michael was here, because he's there every day, and he sees more of what the kids will benefit from. So that's why we're setting up the board, and we're gonna make sure that the community's involved with every decision that we make, because this is ultimately gonna be to their benefit. So we want everyone to have a say in that. And I'm not entirely fixed on it being at the rec. Cooper Park would be a nice space as well. It's just an open space and, you know, more accessible to the general public as well, but.
Yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep, we'll start, hopefully that board will help a lot, too. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns on item I?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And J is also yours, so next item.
Yes, item J, report by Commissioner Chavez, setting forth the dates for the upcoming Recreation Advisory Board and setting the agenda for projects.
Go ahead.
To set the dates, I would have to reach out to the individuals that are on the board.
That's on you. You don't have to bring that here.
Yeah, I'll do that off the table.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the fun starts. All right.
Yes, okay.
But we're doing pretty good. It's 8:20.
Yes, okay. This is the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, submittal. Item 11K, this is the submission of the preliminary city budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 by City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. Another budget, another year. And in order to, I'd like to go on record, in order to comply with the Code of Ordinances and the Charter of the City of West Miami, I have submitted a budget, a preliminary budget for fiscal year starting October 1st, 2022, ending September 30th, 2023. The budget was delivered to you both electronically and in book bound. I had the pleasure and the opportunity to meet with the mayor, the vice mayor, and members of the City Commission, and have some kind of interaction on the budget. And I appreciate the time that you've taken to review the budget and ask questions, but this is just the beginning of the process. So I have complied. I spoke to the mayor yesterday in preparation for this meeting, and I think we both agree that the message is rather long. There are numerous exhibits that are attached, that are attached to the manager's report, that are, that's really very valuable information, and it goes directly to the meat and potatoes, if you would, of the budget. So I'd like to just recap, and I prepared a PowerPoint presentation today so that I can recap the big-ticket items, if you would, in the, as a summary of the general funds. And so with that, I'll start out by informing the commission that the preliminary budget has been submitted by the Office of the City Manager. Preliminary budget changes will occur between now and the public hearings. The certification of the tentative millage rate follows the TRIM guidelines. TRIM stands for Truth in Millage. By August 4th, we have to submit to the Miami Dade County Property Appraisers Office. We have to submit the city's tentative millage rate for fiscal year, start commencing October 1st. The proposed tax notices are sent out by Miami Dade County by mid to late August. Our tentative budget hearing, public hearing on the tentative budget is scheduled for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. This notice for this meeting will appear in all of the notice of proposed taxes that will go out to property owners of the City of West Miami. Our final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Our final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-first, 2022, at seven-thirty PM. The, our property tax and ad valorem proceeds, June first estimates, provided to us by the city, by the Office of the Property Appraiser for Miami-Dade County, showed or illustrated that we had an increase of a fourteen-point-two percent in overall assessed values. The city is proposing a three percent millage rate reduction as suggested by the Office of Property Appraiser and in conversation with the mayor. Our current millage rate is six-point-eight-eight-five-eight, which includes one mill dedicated by ordinance to the City of West Miami Recreation Center. Under this preliminary budget, the proposed millage rate is six-point-six-seven-nine-two, and this includes one mill, again, dedicated by ordinance to the City of West Miami Recreation Center. The value of a mill using the proposed millage rate represents seven-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, calculated at ninety-five percent as defined by the state of Florida by the TRIM calendar. Senior citizen exemptions, we have two-hundred senior citizen families that are eligible to receive the additional homestead exemption, a decrease from prior year. We also have information that the senior additional homestead exemption eligibility is based on total combined household income. And those efforts are led by the Office of Property Appraiser for Miami-Dade County. Your proposed general fund budget totals eight million, three-hundred-and-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, or a decrease in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars when comparing it to the present budget, which is fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, which ends September thirtieth. The general fund budget contemplates a contingency fund in the amount of forty thousand dollars for unexpected contingencies. Additionally, the general fund contemplates a hundred thousand dollars in contingency funds for hurricane activity and/or, God forbid, another pandemic situation. The general fund budget also contemplates a reserve in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, which is a line item to add to the city's unrestricted reserves. That's after you take your revenues and expenses. We have more revenues than we have expenses. So, that puts money in the savings account, if you would. The revenue projections are made after a careful review of actual six-month receipts as of the mid-year review, which is March thirtieth of every year. Inflation costs are contemplated in our line items, and it is unknown how, if a recession is called for, will impact the city as of this presentation. We are closely following economic reports and inflation costs as well. The new revenues are earmarked and/or pledged for special projects. We have no general fund new revenues other than the two million dollars that you have secured for potable water improvement projects and revenues coming from grants. The general fund budget also contemplates all unfunded mandates to include inflation costs, if you would, increases in the mandatory contributions to the Florida retirement system, the medical and life insurance program, workers' compensation premiums, unemployment compensation, general liability and property auto coverage provided by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. All of these include a marker, if you would, for increases as discussed with the Leagues. And again, as we get closer to the September hearings, we will know a little bit more what these numbers are going to be. But I think that we have cautiously projected a safeguard in there, if you would. The budget also includes the recent contract negotiations with the South Florida PBA for the West Miami Police Department for our sworn officers. The budget also includes funding for an additional part-time police officer that's now dedicated to the City of West Miami Recreation Center for summer camp and after-school care around, for the complete year. It includes a set aside for public services union negotiations. It also includes a general fund transfer in the amount of three-hundred-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars to the City of West Miami Community Center to fund the program. The proposed general fund budget also provides for attrition. It includes budget, preliminary budget includes a five percent for all department directors and city employees, a minimum salary of fifteen dollars per hour for all full-time budgeted positions, an increase for the city attorney, and a new position for public services budgeted out of the Streets Division. A detailed budget message, along with a budget and all the supporting exhibits, was submitted to the mayor and city commission on Thursday, July fourteenth, 2022. Copies of the preliminary budget have been uploaded, as required by the state, to the city's website. And again, copies of the preliminary budget are a public record and available to the general public. I have a fifteen-page detailed manager's report on the preliminary budget. Please browse through it, make your notes, and feel free to call me at any time so that we can sit down and talk about the budget.
You know, I changed my mind. Why don't you read the report? No, I'm kidding.
Whatever you say, Mr. Mayor.
No, I would encourage, if you haven't already, which I'm sure you've, we've all met with the manager, gone through the budget line by line, as we have every year. But I would encourage you to also read the report if you haven't yet and continue speaking with the manager and administration as this process continues.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I did leave out, and I want to call your attention to, is the census numbers. I think that's very important. The city has grown. It has also doubled, it has almost doubled our population. We are at eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two, which puts us in a very good position to go after grant money.
Absolutely. So much to tell the Herald. The Herald quoted us at eight thousand this morning.
There we go. They got it wrong. So, we have it from a very credible census website. And I have some really good demographic information here, and it's all part of your packet. Please browse through it, and again, contact me at your convenience.
Thank you. Of course.
In reference to the census, when a city reaches the number of residents over ten thousand dollars, takes a different category, have more benefits. And now, this year, we did it. We are over ten thousand residents. So, this is going to be some good advance for us.
Yeah, even in the Leagues, they treat us differently.
Now, you will be invited for something.
I'll get invited, yeah, I'll get invited to the Leagues.
The city with less than ten thousand residents, they do not invite the mayor. Now, they will invite you.
Give me those numbers on a badge, so I can use it.
I didn't get into the enterprise funds in that presentation, because we are going to publicly read the total of your water department budget. We know we have a grant, and again, and everything else.
We'll discuss that right before, during the resolution, and we read it. Madam Clerk, that was K, correct?
Yes.
Let's read L.
L, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, Establishing the 2022 Tentative Millage Rates Upon All Real and Personal Property Within Decided Limits For the Payments of the Amounts Appropriated in the 2022-2023 Preliminary Budget.
I made the motion?
Is it the motion to approve the manager's recommendation?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron.
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
This has been a three-year fight for me, so it's very rewarding. Item M.
Yes, item M. This is a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the 2022-2023 Preliminary Budget by Mayor and City Commission.
Second.
You have a motion and a second.
Okay, I apologize. Who made the motion?
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Vice Mayor Blanes. And second by Commissioner Suarez. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
All right. And next item. And read it, and then the manager can explain it. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, item N, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, Adopting the Preliminary Water Enterprise Fund Budget for the Year 2022-2023 in the Sum of Five Million One Hundred Seventy-three Thousand Two Hundred Thirty-three Dollars. And that'll be all. Mayor and City Commission. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, your water revenue funds appears to be much higher than in prior years. And it is so because we have the allocation from the state of Florida, the monies that you all brought to the, that are bringing to the city, an amount of two million dollars. And then, we also have an allocation coming in from the American Rescue Act to fund, continue the water improvement project. That is why this budget is such a large amount. It does not contemplate any increases to the residents at this time. I am going to possibly address some inequities that I think we have something that we can work with. But before I bring it to you, I'd like to discuss it with the city attorney to make sure that the presentation is lawful and that we can explore avenues to create new revenues, new income for the water department.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the transfer? This is what we do every year.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second. Call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Thank you. On the consent agenda items, we're just going to erase the fact that it's going to be a consent agenda, because obviously, A has to do with approving or rejecting...
We withdraw this, that item. We should withdraw that item.
Yeah, so that item will be deferred indefinitely.
Yes, deferred until a later date.
Until the next commission meeting, follow the executive session.
Yes.
And then, item B, I'll just pull it, because we're already here, is a request for proclamation for Oneida Medical Center, which we all approved, the special use a while back, and they opened it, and it's beautiful. I went to the senior center with Dr. Rodriguez yesterday. He was here at the same time I was here. And the seniors, I think, were very happy that there's going to be a center nearby that's going to cater to them.
Yes.
So, I will be at the event early. I won't be able to stay for long. So, if anyone is there longer, if anyone plans to go to the event and would like to present the proclamation, if, you know, in my absence...
You can do it when you're there.
Yeah, well, if there's no one there, that's what I'll do. But if someone else from the table will be there, then we'll just do it whenever. I think Commissioner Soza is bringing a proclamation from the county. So, whenever she does it, do it in conjunction with her. If not, I'll do it early, and Commissioner Soza can allude to it. But, okay, so just work with the manager. I'm sure one of you, if any of you plan to go, you'll let her know, and we'll work through that. But either way, I would like to get them a proclamation, because they're going to be very, very good community partners. So, can I get a blessing on that? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item thirteen, Good of the Order.
Does anyone have anything for Good of the Order?
No.
I think we're operating like a fine whale oil machine.
Eight-thirty-eight.
Wow.
Record time.
All righty. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.